We are now live.
Okay, I'm going to call this meeting to order. This is the September 19th meeting of the Planning Commission. Can I have a roll call, please?
Yes. Do we have Commissioner Riehlend?
Here.
Commissioner Smith?
He's excused.
Commissioner Lawrence? Commissioner McGee?
Here.
Commissioner Morando?
Here.
And Commissioner Clow?
She's excused.
You have a quorum, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Riehlend, will you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please? Thank you. Next, we have approval of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda from staff?
Um, Chair Lawrence, no, we do not have any changes.
Okay, are there any changes from the Commission? And if not, can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Can we have a roll call vote?
Commissioner Riehlend?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawrence?
I don't usually vote on.
Uh, Commissioner Morando?
Yes.
And Commissioner McGee?
Yes.
Okay, we don't have any minutes to approve or findings and conclusions or old business, which brings us to our new business, the study session for this evening on the Land Development Code Update Phase One. I, I want to be very, very clear and make, maybe staff can help with this. This is a study session for the Planning Commission members. There are a few people in the audience and you are more than welcome to be here and observe and listen to the study session. But there isn't going to be public testimony in this study session on the Land Development Code Update. Um, and there are, if you do have questions or comments or feedback for the Planning Commission, I know that there are meetings next week with staff to discuss questions. And we will be holding a public hearing when we decide whether to make a recommendation to approve the Land Development Code Update. And public testimony will be welcome then, as will any written comments that you have. Uh, staff, can you say any more about the other opportunities for anyone in the public to say anything?
Yes, yes. Thank you, Chair Lawrence. Um, you are correct. Yeah, we're just, um, doing a study session tonight, uh, for your benefit, um, to, to help facilitate, um, that recommendation hearing that you'll be taking for it. And then following that, there will be public hearings with public comment, uh, in front of the governing body and their commission, their committees as well, uh, prior to the adoption. And in our presentation, we will go over, um, how the public can, uh, you know, provide comments during this drafting phase that we're in right now. And then, uh, you know, on, on going through the next several months. Okay?
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, then I will turn it over to staff or the consultants, whoever is starting the presentation on the code update.
Thank you, Chair Lawrence. Are we going to do presentation from the podium or just from the seat? Chair Lawrence, members of the Commission, you all know me and my name is Daniel Verrado. I'm the project manager of the code rewrite. And, uh, we're really excited to bring this first draft to you. And I'm sorry, this, uh, this plug is very finicky. If you don't plug it directly to the HDMI, which we could have talked about, but that's okay. So let me go ahead and get to this next slide here. Um, so I just want to, I'm just going to introduce the project here. As you know, we've been working on this for over a year and a half, uh, with the Clarion and, uh, staff. Um, we've been, uh, we've done several engagement periods, starting, uh, over a year and a half ago, when we did our open house kickoff, when we gathered information there from the public. And then, um, six months later, we put forward the assessment reports, which we all remember. Uh, we also had some public engagement around that, um, which, uh, we also had some public comment. And then from there, we went on to our, uh, working group, um, public engagement period. So we had our, uh, Citizen Advisory Working Group, our Technical Advisory Working Group, which I was a part of, and Jessica, uh, Commissioner, uh, Lawrence was a part of. And then of course, our, uh, uh, H District Subcommittee and our Planning Commission Subcommittee, which Savarview were a part of. Um, so we've had a lot of people working on, on this over the last, uh, year or so to get to this, uh, place where we are now for Phase One. Um, so just to elaborate on our next engagement opportunities for folks on, in the audience and also online. We've had two public engagement meetings the last two nights, uh, one in the South Side Library, which was really successful. Um, had about sixty or seventy people in the audience, I'd say. And then another last night, um, at the New Mexico History Museum, which, uh, had around, uh, the same attendance. And then, uh, tonight is our study session. Um, so with that in mind, we knew that not everybody would be able to read the entire code because it just dropped on Monday. So we have, um, several engagement opportunities next week, uh, which you can see on the board here. There is going to be this, um, Farmers Market Del Sur, which is the South Side Farmers Market, uh, on the 24th from 36. Then the South Side Library on the 25th from two to six. And then here at City Hall in the Counselors Conference Room from eight to one. So we did try to spread that out geographically and, um, and timing wise, so that different people could attend and ask individual questions one-on-one. Uh, moving forward from that, we are encouraging everybody who has comments, uh, from the public to give them, uh, via our ConvoyO link, which is online. Um, using this big QR code here is one way to get to it. It's on, um, LD Santa Fe, L D C update.org. Um, if that doesn't work for you, you can also just email us. Uh, we have the email here, L D C update at Santa Fe dot gov. Um, so finally, I just wanted to also recognize, uh, staff involvement in this. Maggie Moore's Assistant Director Interim, Assistant Director Maggie Moore has been really helpful in all this, um, as well as our new, uh, official land use director, Heather Lambboy, who is not here tonight, but, uh, she's on a much, uh, deserved vacation in Peru. Um, and then, um, from there, I wanted to recognize members of the COG. We have Joe Simmons here today to give a quick testimony about his, uh, his involvement with the COG. And I know that, um, members of the Commission can also testify to the involvement. So with that, I'd like to go to Joe and let him give a few words about the COG involvement.
Chair, staff, great to see you guys. Very good. Um, my name is Joe Simmons. Do I need to give you the official stuff on my address and stuff like that? Okay, great. Okay. So, um, I am, uh, I wanted to, first of all, commend the staff and Clarion for such a great job in making land use code that personally I have found to be nearly impossible to work with, uh, and putting it into a very, very legible document. I think this is just, uh, certainly a step in the right direction. So my person being here tonight is a member of the Santa Fe Chapter of the American Institute of Architects. I am a representative of the Technical Advisory Working Group. Uh, I'm here primarily to represent the opinions of my own and not to be construed as any kind of an endorsement or approval. Sure, that's correct. Um, Maggie asked me if I would speak, uh, about just a few items that I have found to be, uh, a very good thing in the, in the rewrite. And then a couple of things that I'm looking forward to in Phase Two. So the, the primary thing that I, uh, am happy about is that the efforts to create certainty for applicants who use this code to make progress with their plans by eliminating the uncertainties and the inconsistencies that exist in the current code. Uh, and then there's a, for instance, that there's a commentary on page 141 of the draft where, uh, for high-density districts that are implied by the district name, but require Plan Commission approval to go to that level of density. And I think that the recommendation here is to just make that as a by right. And so I think that, uh, the more that that can be done to create certainty in the code for the people who use it, for staff, sure, and for the public, uh, the better off we're going to be. You know, I'm, I'm a New Mexico native. I'm, uh, had my architecture degree from U N M, but I spent, uh, virtually all of my professional career in Denver. I've recently moved back a few years ago. Um, so, you know, we had discussed about raising the minimum number of units subject to Planning Commission approval. Uh, and those, those didn't make it into the draft and I'm hopeful that it might, uh, there. My objective here is just as Santa Fe is developing and getting larger, that the more, the more things that could be done to sort of on a pro forma basis, it's going to be better for everyone. So I think that that's certainly a very major push that, uh, what's happening in the code. Um, I have quite a bit of experience with some other codes that use similar formats that Clarion has put together. The graphics and the explanations and the tables that are germane to that particular item just makes the code so much easier to work with. It's just, it's just really a home run. Um, that there's, uh, specific language that encourage infield development. I, as an architect and sometimes developer, see that that is a tremendous opportunity for the city to do, uh, infill. So the more that we can kind of push in that direction, creating certainty, that would be great. And then, uh, the thing that I'm very happy about, that, uh, we had a lot of discussion in the working groups, was, uh, to get it into this draft rather than to wait for a couple of years is to increase the efforts to create affordable housing in Santa Fe. Uh, that's just such a great thing to do, to give density bonuses for varying levels of affordability. And I think that's going to be very successful. Uh, something that I'm looking forward to in Phase Two is the creation of a form-based code. Turn here about what the current code is called. Um, but some of the aspects that currently exist in the code are moving towards form-based. There's a lot of, uh, language in the, in the Airport Road, uh, sub-district that encourages locations of doors, entrances, loading areas. All that kind of stuff is going to really help, um, you know, create that certainty. And a form-based code that is based in enhancing the pedestrian experience, that's a completely change of philosophy come about in about the last twenty-five or thirty years. It started with the new urbanism and it's now made its way into form-based codes. And so I work with Denver's Form-Based Code and that's been in place for fifteen years. And it's just remarkable how well it works to help create very good urban solutions. Uh, so I'm looking forward to being part of that conversation. I think, uh, the restructuring of existing zone districts to encourage a greater mix of uses and move in the direction of recreating the fifteen-minute city, uh, which existed here for a couple of hundred years until the advent of the automobile. So I think that, uh, that we're going to be able to make some good progress, uh, with that moving forward. Um, I'm personally in favor of increasing the density by allowing higher densities along arterials, uh, preserving the character of the residential and lower-scale neighborhoods. A form-based code can really, really help with that. Um, to encourage redevelopment in the more easily accessed sites that are already have the utilities in place. And so, you know, along the arterials, all of that infrastructure is there. You know, upgrading a water tap is just a simple matter rather than having to bring in, um, utilities. Um, personal charge I'm, uh, going to be in favor of is the reduction of overall parking requirements. If you were to look at aerial photographs of the city, you'll notice that there are very few parking lots that are even half full. Uh, so a free parking space, my quote, is not a basic human right. Now, free parking space at the front door is not a basic human right. You know, I think a lot of people mean that. And a lot of the zoning codes have kind of moved in that direction to kind of create that false sense. Um, and so, you know, we see in our basic health as a nation, oh, that we're so dependent on cars that we don't walk anymore. I'm looking forward to, to doing that. Uh, I'm looking forward to furthering uses by right by reducing the numbers of public hearings. And this is where we went, uh, earlier, uh, discussing about maybe raising the threshold when this commission has to make approvals of some, what I would regard as really very pro forma types of applications. I'm not talking about special stuff, but just the stuff that just comes in on a two-to-day basis. Land use staff is already overwhelmed and it could be more. Uh, then there's one thing that I would like to add, uh, ask for, if I could. Since the new code is web-based, which is so great, there's no book anymore. I would like to have a back button so that when I go to look at a reference that I don't have to, first of all, before I click that button, remember what page I'm on, if I could just simply go back. If that's, and it seems to me that might be possible. So, so those are my few comments here I'd like to make. And I just want to congratulate everybody here who's been participating and all the other, uh, volunteer members of working groups. It's a remarkable process and Santa Fe just stands at a threshold of, you know, just doing something really great with its new code. So.
Thank you, Mr. Simmons. And thank you for your work on the talk.
I think we'll move to the presentation with Matt and Jenny. Thanks, guys.
Matt, can I ask, since this is a study session, do you mind if we ask clarifying questions? If the commissioners ask any clarifying questions while you all are presented? Presented, right. Thank you.
Informal and just wave your hand and let me know. Commissioner, it's good to see you. Thank you for the time. Thank you for the opportunity. Um, Matt Goble with Clarion Associates. We have, uh, really, uh, three-fold, uh, goals with our agenda tonight. One is just to remind you and, and the public about the overall scope of the project and why the city is embarking on this project to update the development regulations. I'll go through that very quickly. Um, then we'll spend more detailed time on the Phase One improvements, talking about everything that we have accomplished in terms of the low-hanging fruit, um, for updating the code. And then we'll give you a sense of where we're going in years 2024, 25, 26, with the more substantive updates to the code and the more significant updates. Um, yes, please do ask questions as we go along. Uh, we've added more detail, uh, from the prior presentations, especially in the Phase One section, to give you all a real sense of some of the updates that have been made. So briefly about the project, um, y'all know what the Land Development Code is. You know how it important, how important it is. Um, you know why the city embarked on this project. You've, you understand, we've talked before about the, the origins behind this project. Um, now talking about what we've done, I think the L D C document, the Phase One draft that's been posted online really does meet a lot of those objectives that the city set forth in the RFP originally for this project. It is better organized. I appreciate Joe's comments. We do think it is better, uh, uh, structured to find information that you need, like with like. It's not scattered among different places. It is better illustrated, as you see on the right. There's more that we can do, but we didn't want to go too far down the road of illustrating things that still might change in subsequent phases, but we've illustrated the things that we think will stay pretty consistent. Uh, we've rewritten a lot of the texts to eliminate planerries, legalese, et cetera, uh, resolve inconsistencies, update cross-references, et cetera. Um, it took us a while to get here. Um, you know that we started at the end of 2023 and we, first of all, just talked with a lot of folks, including everyone up here, I think. And, uh, a lot of, uh, members of the governing body, members of the Santa Fe community, about what they liked about the code, but more often what they thought could be improved about the L D C. We summarized all that feedback in the assessment report. We talked about that with you in the fall of last year. Then we turned around and started to implement the assessment report with the draft that culminates in the document you see now. Um, that's called the Foundations Document. It's intended to be the foundation for more significant work to happen in 2025 and moving on, 2025 and moving on. Um, Phase Two is going to be promoting key standards. That's where we get into maybe more substantive updates, like, like Joe mentioned, like, like rethinking parking requirements in different parts of Santa Fe, rethinking some of the historic standards, maybe. Um, then we'll hopefully adopt that piece and come back with a Phase Three that will be, uh, done by the time the new general plan is finished. And so, so we can circle back then and look at the updated list of zoning districts, compare that to the new future land use plan, it's done as part of the general land use plan, and, and reconcile those things. So it is a longer process than we typically do. I was talking about this with some folks last night. Um, but it makes sense. It's reasonable. And in a place like Santa Fe where there has been such reluctance to really do substantive major change to the code, it makes sense to be very methodic and take a lot of baby steps, honestly, especially at the beginning, as we're establishing, establishing a uniform, unified sense of, of what we can accomplish. Um, as part of that kind of building trust, we've had a lot of different stakeholder outreach efforts. Um, you see all those summarized here, how we got to this point. I'm not going to read all these. You can see a lot of engagement meetings, six TOG, ten COG, et cetera, three Historic Subcommittee. From, from my personal perspective, one of the key benefits that you already have achieved as part of this project is just the formation of those working groups and the building of a sense of trust of a Citizens Advisory Working Group and a Technical Working Group. Um, those will carry you far as you get into the harder work of the next phases. What really is going to help sustain a project like, like this over time is building momentum, uh, among a diverse group and then carrying it forward as you get into the hard conversations. And, and we've seen that, uh, built as, as part of this first work. I think the staff really deserves a lot of credit for identifying people for those working groups and, and helping sustain them as they move forward. And, and they've put in a lot of time themselves, the working group members. So I commend Joe, I commend them all. I think that's really a, it's, it's an unusual feature of this project, based on some other work that we've done and I'm glad, I'm glad that it's happened. Um, this is another slide that shows the overall scope of the project. Again, that public engagement piece is shown graphically. Uh, there's been a lot of it and it will continue, not just, uh, with the release of this draft, but on through, uh, the rest of the year. Uh, with the release of this draft, we're going to be getting public comment from the ConvoyO platform. We'll then be rolling the document out to the governing body, introducing it in October, uh, continuing to get public feedback, continuing to, to monitor, to refine and, and fine-tune the draft, uh, getting additional feedback from different locally city agencies, getting additional comment through the public hearing process. Then hopefully, uh, getting to that adoption process by the end of the year. Um, it's aggressive, but we also think it is reasonable, considering the strong, uh, effort of public engagement that's been done, the strong amount of public engagement. Um, and the fact that also the, the level of change is, first of all, there's not a lot of it. And second of all, it's been very transparent. It's all been very clearly marked for the public where we've made changes and what those changes are. One of the biggest ones, the affordable housing piece, we'll talk about quite a bit more tonight. But the level of change, I think, is reasonable, um, to support this aggressive adoption schedule. Um, I think that's my last slide. That, we're going to move into the second part of the presentation, which is really getting into the Phase One improvements. Uh, any questions before we, we do that? Sounds good. I'll get to my colleague Jenny.
Good evening, Commission members. My name is Jenny Baker. I'm with Clarion Associates in Denver. And I'm going to talk to you now about the changes that have been included in the draft. Um, we are going to go into a good bit of detail since you, as a commission, have to work with the code to make the decisions that you make. So let's get started. Improving the zoning districts has been, uh, pretty significant focus here. And while, um, I'll talk a little bit more about things that we did with specific districts. One of the main things that we hope to accomplish with this was to reorganize them and make them more accessible and easier to use. So you are aware that right now, if you want to know the purpose of a district, it is in Section fourteen four. But if you want to know anything else, that's in a different section of the code. You have to go to fourteen dash seven point two. So what we did was pull all of that apart and put it back together in a way that if you want to know something about a particular district, it's all in one location. So what this is showing on the left is some of the districts now as they're currently structured. And then on the right, that's the way they've been updated. So there is the purpose statement. There is a statement that has, there's a table, rather, that has all the dimensional standards in one place. And then there is an illustration that shows representative development in the district. The ideal is to fit these on one page. Right now, there's a little bit of, um, reorganizing that maybe we can do so that works. But in any case, at least you can just look in one location and find all of the relevant information about a district. So some other things that we have included in the draft. Um, we have tried to reduce some of the table notes. So when you are looking at the dimensional tables that are in fourteen dash seven, the residential one has about sixteen different table notes. And so you're flipping around, trying to figure out, well, okay, what, what does this mean? Where do I have to go? We haven't gotten rid of all of them, but we have tried to kind of put them into the tables and make them part of the content instead of having them as kind of addendums. So the number of those has been reduced significantly where we've been able to do that. This is an example on the right of one of those tables. And so you can see what's included in it. It's the same stuff that's in the tables fourteen point, or fourteen dash seven. It's just in a different format that we hope is easier for you to use. Anytime you see in the code, um, the little section mark, that double S thing, um, that is an active link. So if that says, in this case, you can do greater open space if you do so in compliance with fourteen point oh three, et cetera, et cetera. If you click that, that will take you to those standards. We haven't done the part about going back yet, but thanks for the suggestion. Anyway, we'll get you there and then we'll figure out how to get you back. Um, another thing that I think is important to mention, this applies to all zoning districts. We have suggested, at the request of feedback from the public, from the working groups and from staff, to increase the permitted height by two feet. So that would take your standard residential districts from a building height of twenty-four feet to twenty-six. And that would take commercial districts from thirty-six feet to thirty-eight. This does not apply in any overlay districts, so it wouldn't change anything in the historic districts. But for new development outside of those overlays, we've done it to kind of respond to modern construction techniques, to make it a little bit easier to, um, have higher ceilings, make heating and cooling a little bit easier. So that's the reasoning behind it. But we know that height is a sensitive topic here, so we want to bring it up so that you're aware it's in there. You have any comments about it? Couple of other things in specific districts. As Joe Simmons mentioned, we are suggesting that the higher-density districts allow what they imply by right. So that's R twelve, R twenty-one, and R twenty-nine. Instead of a development plan, if proposals in those districts comply with what the dimensional standards are, they can be approved by right. They no longer automatically have to come for a public hearing for a decision. The other thing is there is an addition of a Parks and Open Space District. Um, that was made in response to feedback that said that currently R one is what usually is used for parks and people were concerned that someday that could allow other development. With a Parks and Open Space District, it's very limited and that would no longer be a possibility. Um, the images are just to show you a couple of the other illustrations that are from different districts in the draft. Yes?
Difference to the open space? Backyard open space or outside of the actual individual unit?
It, it is not the same open space that has to be provided for every individual unit. It would be larger open space areas, natural areas, parks, and that kind of thing. Okay, so any other questions? Otherwise, we'll get into overlay districts. Great. You have a lot of overlays and we have carried them forward, subject to some, some changes that I'll describe. There are a couple of them that didn't come forward. One of them is the Residential Suites Hotel Motel Overlay. And the other one is the Ecological Resource District. Neither of those had actually been implemented. In the case of the Residential Suites one, you can do that. You don't need a special overlay to do it. It's just, you know, a use that can fit into a different district. Um, with the Ecological Resource District, if there is a need for something like that, there's still a way to create overlays. It's just that one is not sitting around out there that hasn't really been used. In this draft, we've tried to include maps that show the boundaries and locations. Here are two examples. We realize they are not the greatest, clearest maps, but it's a starting point and we'll refine them in Phase Two. It's just a step forward because if you just flip open the code and you're looking and you're like, well, where would the archaeological districts apply? There's no real indication in the code of that, so. There's no real indication in the code of that. So maybe these aren't perfect, but there are a step in the direction that we'd like to go in phase two. As for particular overlays, we've spent a good bit of time with the escarpment overlay to reorganize it, to make it simpler to use, to eliminate some lack of clarity and inconsistency. There aren't changes in the content of it, but we did change the way that it's organized and the language and headings that are used to make the terminology consistent. The airport road overlay has, as you know, very detailed restrictions on the sale of alcohol. And they were preventing some of the uses that were actually desirable in that overlay. So couldn't really have a grocery store selling wine, couldn't really have a restaurant selling beer, whatever. Those uses couldn't really work with the overlay as it stands, given the very detailed restrictions. So we are suggesting pulling those out and we realize that there are some reasons why adjusted regulations to that end may be desirable to keep in there. But right now, the the regulations are so detailed, they're actually impossible to enforce. So I don't think they are producing the outcome that people wanted from them, but they are precluding some outcomes that people do want in that district. So that may be a topic that is subject to further discussion, but it is proposed in this draft and we'll see what you all think about it.
And did you detail that recommendation in the meetings with constituents and have you heard any feedback?
So we did talk about that in both of the meetings. On the first night, there was a participant who said, who kind of explained the reason that those were in there. And I think that was good context for us to hear, you know, this was a public health issue and they really just didn't want to see the proliferation of, you know, liquor stores and advertising and all of the kind of commercial establishments in that area. And so that was kind of new information to us. And that's why I say I think maybe there will be a reason to revisit that and maybe we're not done with that.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'll just interrupt that. Chair Lawrence and and Commissioner McGee, that individual was Miguel Acosta, who is well known, you know, in the community. And so, yeah, it was, you know, that was shared and and there was some discussion about that. And I think one of the other points we want to make too about that is that one of those prohibitions in that overlay is about the little sale of mini miniature alcohol, which is now citywide. And so I think, you know, our thinking is, you know, trying to reevaluate what the intent and purpose of those regulations are. And if there's other more enforceable, you know, or easily implemented, you know, measures that can be taken to to, you know, kind of meet those purpose and goals.
Sorry, I just want to add also Miguel is going to be on our cog moving forward. He's representing Earth Care, so he's definitely going to be in the conversation. Just want to add that.
So I guess to sum up on that one, try not to have regulations that you can enforce. Try not to have regulations that are duplicated elsewhere in city ordinance. And then maybe update those to apply more specifically to the things, the impacts that are they're trying to avoid. Last thing about overlays, the historic district has been reformatted and carried forward. There's also a working group, as you're probably aware, that is looking at that. We haven't received their feedback yet. So there aren't any really significant changes in that overlay at this time. We will put comments, take their comments into account and make changes. And so you'll see further changes to that, I think, when the adoption draft comes to you. And then more significant changes again in phase two or three. Okay, so that is overlays. Is there anything that you want to ask about that? Or do you want to go ahead with use regulations? Okay. You have a use table in your current code. We think this one looks a little better and is a little easier to navigate. It is still structured so that there are categories of uses and then individual use types within that. They, over on the right, there is a link for each one. If there are use specific standards that apply to that particular use. So again, it'll take you there, maybe figure out a way to get you back. That's for the structure of it. We have added some uses in this draft, but we haven't taken any out. So we've also combined some things. There were various detailed permutations of urban farm and there wasn't really any difference in the standards for them. It was just the size. So we put those together. We've added some things like film production. But the main thing is the emphasis on expanding the allowed housing types. This page shows the housing types and the ones that are yellow are new. The reason for that change is to try to help with affordability and with providing different types of homes for different types of residents and families. Right now, the code is very it's not very permissive in terms of what kind of housing it allows. And so this is one step to getting different kinds of housing for different price levels and different families.
Jenny, can I ask where you added new uses? How did you determine the level of where it is, where is it permitted, where is it conditional, et cetera? But what determined how you were making recommendations?
So one of the reasons behind it is the work that we do with this in most of the communities where we're working. Housing affordability is an issue everywhere. So that's kind of why we are taking this approach in terms of where they are specifically permitted. We took a look at the density. So, you know, a quadplex is probably not going to show up too often in rural residential. But we tried to allow them by right in places where the density would permit that kind of development. Last thing to mention with this is
One other question.
Please go ahead.
Can you tell me the difference between accessory dwelling unit and casita development?
I can. So an accessory dwelling unit is just a freestanding individual unit that will typically be placed on a lot with an existing dwelling. A casita development is one lot that will have multiple small units on it. I don't know that I've seen a lot of them here, but it's kind of a courtyard development. So you will have generally a shared open space and then maybe three, four, six, sometimes more than that, but they're smaller dwellings that share an open space on one lot. Actually, compounds. Yeah. Yeah, why I'm explaining this like you've never seen it before. There are compounds here. So that's
And yeah, Chair Lawrence and and Commissioner McGee. So this was, you know, so one of the things we heard a lot was like, how do we incentivize the type of development, traditional, you know, styles of development that you know, our code kind of made illegal, you know, years ago. And so this is one of those, you know, mechanisms where, and I know there's a few of these, you know, downtown in the historic district off of Camp Canyon Road, you know, where you've got little walkways and multiple little, you know, apartments, you know, in a in a nice little kind of garden setting. So that's what we're we're trying to encourage there.
Awesome. Thank you.
Great. Okay, last thing. Your current standards for accessory and temporary uses are text sections of the code. Now those uses are included in this table and where additional standards need to apply, as with accessory dwelling units. You can get to them through the links, but they're included in the table now as well. Yes?
Thing I'd be careful with is that in real estate, we typically refer to the guest houses as casita. Right. Trying to make sure there's clarity in the sense that the general public understands that there is a difference in the terminology.
Ah, yeah. Okay, we can revisit calling it casita developments, but we were calling it, I think, port yard and somebody suggested it would be more comprehensible to people by using the term casita, but we can revisit that. Development and design standards, there's a lot in here. But the changes are not especially significant in most cases. Once again, focus on using simpler language so it is more comprehensible and easier to navigate. Reorganization, adding headings, just putting information that is similar in the same place. So you will see that as you page through the sections. For landscaping, the one thing that we focused on at this time was improving perimeter parking lot standards, which were very unclear in terms of what you had to provide. And so now there are new standards in there that are pretty specific about what is needed along the perimeter of a parking lot when it faces a street or when it's along a residential property line. We included information about permitted fence materials and the prohibition against barbed wire, which isn't new, but it was in a different section. So we just put it in here so it's all in one place. We will talk more about the potential changes for landscaping in the next section, and I think there's a lot to say about that. That's what's happened so far. Parking is always a popular topic, so I'll spend some time telling you what's happened with this. First thing is we have taken it out of the appendix and put that information into the code. So you don't have to look in two different places. We haven't generally in this draft reduced any of the parking ratios that are in there. So if you have to provide one point five spaces for bedroom for a multiunit, that's still the same. We will definitely take a look at that in the second phase, but for right now, that's a big change to get into. So we've carried forward those requirements. What we have done instead in the meantime is to provide a lot of different options for flexibility in the number of spaces. So if you have certain requirements for a development and you feel like I don't actually need that many and I can demonstrate that, then there are a lot of different ways that you can reduce that number. They're listed here. These are six or seven. I think that altogether there are eight in there. But there are things like allowing on-street spaces to count and using off-site parking if there is an agreement, using shared parking if the businesses that are using it have different hours. Proximity to transit and trails. Provision of a transit facility, which is something that is carried forward from the current regulations. If you provide structured parking or if you are within a certain proximity of existing commercial parking that can be used by the general public. And then the one other thing is there is a reduction for affordable and senior housing. So while the number of spaces required is still the same, there are opportunities to be able to provide less parking in certain situations like these. We have added both information about ADA. These aren't new requirements, but they weren't in the code. Now they are. I think that's clear. There's a table that says you have this many parking spaces, you are required to provide this many ADA accessible and van spaces. The other thing is this table, which is showing you the recommendations for EV parking requirements. These are split up two ways. This is talking about EV capable and EV installed. The difference is EV capable has to have the infrastructure there so that later the like actual charging station can be put in. And EV installed is what it sounds like. That charging station, the full charging station is there and installed. These are, these are preliminary and this is a really fast changing area of regulation for many communities. So this is what we've seen. This is what maybe suggested in a number of places. I think it will, it will get you going. And then as the area of regulation changes, we can come back to it in phase two and three if need be.
Yeah, Jenny, I wanted to ask about that specifically if I could, just because it is so new and in my mind, in my mind, it seems like we're still not sure if this is the type of charging that we're going to see in the future, which is not to say that we shouldn't put in a change now and then change it if necessary. But I was wondering if you could just speak a little bit more about, you know, where else you've researched, where else you've seen these sort of recommendations, sort of the basis for this recommendation, these EV numbers or this type. And and I think in my mind, it's specifically with the non-residential, but how that, how you've seen that and what your research has been.
So this is another topic that comes up in many communities where we've been working because people want to start seeing this being installed. These requirements or these regulations are sort of based on what we've worked to tailor for different places. And you'll notice that the EV capable is a much greater percentage than what's installed. What I think that does right now is it gets you some of the spaces that you need right now, but it doesn't lock you into a kind of technology for the future that may change or that may be obsolete. So that's why there's the difference. It's also because when you're adding new regulations, you don't want to get too far down the road with it. That doesn't altogether answer the question.
That that helps. In my mind, I still am sort of surprised that we're not moving more towards a gas station model for EV charging, that it is more sort of an everywhere, there's a parking spot model. And so in my mind, I'm still, I think, just trying to wrap my head around that. But that's not to say that we shouldn't start somewhere and change it if we need to.
I think we're kind of starting in a modest way rather than going overboard and having having a negative reaction to it. And then you can expand or all adapt, I guess, as the the requirement changes or as the technology changes.
Well, are these requirements different than the International Energy Code requirements? They they look slightly more, but close.
Can't answer that off the top of my head.
No, I mean, we're already governed by that.
The more aggressive than that?
That was my sense, but I wasn't quite sure just looking at it.
And just on the prior question about, you know, what other places have we looked at? I don't know that we've done a lot of New Mexico based research. We do a lot of Texas code work and we've looked at dozens of codes in Texas. And this kind of hits a sweet spot right in the middle of a lot of places that have started to regulate this. Now, I recognize many communities have just not touched this at all. And some communities have gone very far and they've said you need to have a very high number of fully installed spaces. We were trying to hit a relatively modest, you know, but significant improvement. There's there's more work to do here. I mean, there's places like California, for example, that they don't just focus on EV in this context, but they have a clean car requirement. And you could have spaces for it could be carpool vehicles, it could be EV, it could be other low energy vehicles. But there's a, there's a broader definition of things that would fit into this space. So there's, there's ways that we can bring this conversation further. This is a first step.
And these were all level two, is that right? Yeah, which like level two, right, fleet vehicle, level three, closest to a gas station. Great to see more of it. I'm very supportive of it, but also within the context of our grid, they're a real problem.
But there's also problems functionally with the weight of these cars and trying to retrofit existing parking garages with these spaces can be a real challenge. I was on the phone with another community this morning and their engineers were telling them they were capped at six spaces. That's, that's the, all the weight that that existing garage can take from these cars because they just weigh more.
I I just want to add commissioners, this recommendation to add EV charging came from our sustainability director or officer before he left, Neil Dunn. So he does have some local or more regional experience and he advised us on what the ratio could be.
Last presentation, it's my understanding that the whole idea of this is it can be adjusted, it can be updated as things change, the community changes and so forth. Like you're saying, in years from now, we might be talking about a whole nother technology.
Very much so. Yeah, I think we're trying to set you up with a flexible platform that you can monitor and fine tune as technologies change, as the cities needs change. But this is starting to, you know, carve out a place for clean energy vehicles and say, these are important to us. We need to, we need to recognize them in the planning for these sites. The whole question about moving to a gas station model is really interesting. And I I just think it's more of a supply side question than the land use question, but there's other countries where their energy providers have invested more heavily in both the EV technology and also the fossil fuels. And like in Vietnam, they're starting to move to a model where they have both of those combined at one station. But I just don't think the US energy sector is there yet, but they're, they're talking about it.
And we have a lot of parking lots. So.
The the problem is it would literally crash our grid quite quickly. And I mean, unfortunately, it would. We just have a really old infrastructure like. But I I did have a question and I I thought it was great to see the expansion of including more context and parking requirements. And I get that's a good first step. One thing that was always sort of a gray offering on the part of staff was that you could in certain cases, do a essentially an owner driven demand report on your parking. It was, I don't believe it's actually defined in the code, but it's
It is now.
That that's part of this.
So these, these different things in many cases require, I don't know why Steph is groaning over there. Should I stop? Okay. I'm like, am I, am I getting us in trouble? I'm like, am I, am I getting us in trouble?
No.
There, there was an option for a parking demand study and it is still in there. To get some of these reductions, you still need that. So it says what it is and the purpose it has to serve. What is left open to determination by staff and by you all is, does it have to be, you know, a traffic engineer who prepares it, who prepares it? And how do you determine the validity of it is left open to you all to determine. But the requirement for it and what it needs to show to be valid is in there. Okay, you ready to move on to more clean energy vehicle discussion? This is bike parking. This is another one of the more significant changes to what is in the draft versus what is in the current chapter 14. There are some bike require, bike parking requirements in there, but I, I think they are tied to, to cars. So if you allow someone to reduce the number of parking spaces that they have, you may end up with no bike parking spaces. So we've kind of taken those two things apart and created this table that shows what you need to provide for different uses. And they're both short-term spaces, which are the kind of racks that you see outside, and long-term spaces, which have to be in a secured indoor location. These are based on the recommendations of your MPO staff who pointed us in the direction of the guidelines of the Association of Pedestrian and Bicycle Professionals, who have very, very detailed guidelines about how much bike parking should be provided. So that's where these come from. They are significantly different from what you have. So I guess as part of your review, this may be an area of focus to see if you think it will work for you. Okay, so other development and design standards. I'm going to go through this part pretty quick because the changes are not very significant. And I think Carlos is going to talk to you then about the Santa Fe Housing Program changes, which are significant and important. We have taken the first pass through your signs regulations to remove content-based, content-based regulation, which is illegal. You all are aware, if you are saying like, you can't have a garage sale sign. Well, how do you know it's a garage sale sign? You have to read it. If you have to read it to know that's an illegal regulation. As you're aware, you can regulate how many signs, the size of the signs and where they're located. So we've gone through and tried to make sure that you are on the right side of legal rulings as far as that goes. Impact fees have been reorganized, but there is no change to the actual costs of them. We have not really done anything with the street design standards on account of the fact that there is a separate project to update those. And we've also not made any significant changes to the architectural design review process or checklist, the points table, because I think a lot of that is going to be tied up in the general plan process. In terms of how do you want to approach development in Santa Fe, what is it going to look like? And those kinds of value questions. And then I also think it's going to be tied up in changes to the historic districts and in some form-based regulations. So for now, kind of left this as it stands.
I have a question on standards. I get why they're not in this, but I thought it was great. Our specific residential were in the table. Some of them seem like they're going to need their own, right? Maybe not. It just seems like the current standards for development are going to make some of those really hard. Actually, I think that comes up a lot with historic compounds where like all, almost all historic compounds right now here don't be what, what, you know. Obviously, we can't like avoid what the fire marshal needs probably, but I, maybe there can be more specific development standards just for those.
I think in general, the infrastructure standards are probably going to be more of a focus in the second half. There's, there's a lot that can be done with that. And we didn't really get into subdivision and design standards. But I think that there is a lot of improvement to be made there as well. So putting all of that together as part of phase two, including whether there are proper standards to deal with new kinds of residential development, something that we can think about.
Just add, one of the main focuses of that project being worked on by Public Works is to be, have more context-sensitive standards. And there's going to, they're going to be also iterative so that we're not going to have, be in the code anymore and be very rigid. And so they'll be able to think about, yeah, different contexts, different housing types that hopefully will enable those kind of housing types to come online.
Okay, last topic from me and then we will get to the Santa Fe Homes program. Administration and procedures. And a topic I am sure that is close to your heart doing what you do. These are, so you have common review procedures right now. You also have a summary table. Those have been carried forward, but in a manner that I hope you will find is improved. The common review procedures have more detail about what goes into each of those steps. So how does an application proceed? Well, first of all, there are the pre-development meetings. That's a pre-application conference and the ENN. Then someone submits an application. What does it take for that to be complete and accepted? What is the analysis of that that leads to a staff report and recommendation? What is the process for public hearings and the notice that goes along with them? Finally, when there is a decision, what applies afterwards? So those are the components of the common review procedures and there's a good bit of detail in there. For each of the other individual procedures, you can see in the image on the right. That's how those have been structured. So they do follow that common review procedure. I guess, organization. And then there are additional details for any instance where there are specific things to that application. We have not proposed at this time any changes to notice practices or to the decision makers. Though as, has come up, there may be opportunities for that in the second phase.
Jenny, has there been any discussion so far? And that this isn't necessarily something that would have been a phase one action. But for instance, the review procedures perhaps not being part of the code as they're not necessarily a code-type element necessarily. They really are a procedure.
We haven't had that exact discussion. What we have recommended is where you have in the code, information that says, here's what you have to submit for your application. That should probably come out because you want to be able to change that. And the way that's processed changes. Right now, there's a lot of stuff in there that says you have to submit four copies and they have to be signed. Well, you don't anymore. So that part we have recommended should come out. We have not recommended, nor have we heard from people, that the entire notion of the review should be removed from the code.
It's hard to say that something should be not code anymore. And I'm not necessarily advocating for it, but reading through it, it doesn't necessarily seem like something that needs to be, but.
I'll just add Chair Lawrence. Yeah, I mean, I, I think there, because there's parts of the code that just say the, the land use director will establish, you know, review and approval procedures and establish applications, you know, that to, to facilitate, you know, these processes or these, you know, proposals. And I think, you know, that might be, you know, the better use of the code is to designate who's responsible for these things. And then, you know, because they do change, as you know, we're not. Thank you.
Your comment made me think that someone said last night or the night before that Santa Fe had never met a problem that there was not a regulation to solve, which made me laugh. And I'm not saying that's true and I'm not advocating either way, but I just thought that was funny. Okay, so specific procedures. We did pull a couple of these out and these are the ones and here is why. Residential condominium is a form of land ownership. It doesn't need to be a procedure. And most of what that procedure referenced were ordinances and regulations that dated back decades ago. So we're suggesting that there are other ways that this kind of thing is going to be reviewed anyway. I don't, there doesn't really need to be a procedure for it. Same thing with development in a special flood hazard area. This wasn't really a procedure. It's an element of different procedures. So if there is that development proposed, it will either be reviewed as part of a subdivision or a development plan. Again, it doesn't need to be a separate procedure. And what it also included was the responsibilities of the floodplain administrator. So those have been pulled out and put into the section on the responsibilities of decision-making bodies. Final thing is minor modification was in there as a procedure. It isn't. It's a component of a discretionary allowance that you as decision-makers have, but it's not a separate procedure. So those are not in there. Couple of caveats about this whole section is that it's not completely finished. There's a lot in there. And so you will see as you look through it that there are some reformatting things still to be done. I think the subdivision section in particular, because there isn't a separate one in the code, everything's in there. Not just a procedure, but standards, procedure, everything is in that section. I think it can be significantly improved now just by saying which parts are procedure and which parts are related to design and regulation. And then in phase two, maybe by creating a subdivision section where those non-procedural elements can live. So that is what I have about that. I would like to invite Carlos to come up if he's still here and awake. Thank you, to talk to you about Santa Fe Homes program. Thank you for your time and attention. Do you have any other questions before I pass this over?
I was thinking about Mr. Simmons' comments earlier. When I review title documents, there's usually blue hyperlink. Is there a possibility to have a pop-up screen of a hyperlink in reference to specific area that he's discussing instead of having the back button? Does that make sense?
Sure. Yeah, there's a lot of bells and whistles that can be added to the online platform. It's, it's really beyond the scope of what we're doing right now. And I think there's a lot of questions that we've heard from different people about how that functionality can be improved. You all are investing pretty heavily into a new digital platform as part of the general plan. And I'm excited to see where that goes. And, and it seems like that might provide a really interesting platform for the code also. So I guess we're just kind of taking notes about all the things people would like to see with the online platform, recognizing that, that that is an integral part of the experience. But it's really not part of what we're doing right now. It's, it's just down the road.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Good evening. My name's Carlos Gamora. I'm a consultant with Site Southwest. We do affordable housing plans, some zoning codes, things like that. I'm here right now to talk about some of the affordable housing incentives we wrote. Let me first start with existing Santa Fe Homes program, how this works. You guys are probably somewhat familiar with this already. One of the main things I want to talk about is, you know, right now, the code requires 20% of dwelling units for sale to be affordable, 15% of rental units to be affordable. Also allows fee and lieu for rental projects. There's a density bonus right now that whether you're providing 100% affordable or 0% affordable and paying fee and lieu, you get a 15% density bonus. Whether you're providing a lot of affordable housing or no affordable housing, everyone kind of gets that 15% density bonus. What happens right now is Santa Fe does not have meaningful or significant benefits to incentivize affordable housing. Those don't exist. In 2019, when city staff wanted to change how fee and lieu works, increase those prices. At the time, I was working for the city. And so we started drafting affordable housing incentives, looking at streamlining the process for affordable housing, reducing the fees, having more density. Density is key. Without density, you can't have affordability. If you want affordability, you need that density to make things work. Trying to make, uh, trying to address affordable housing a little bit easier, have it be more consistent and clear in how it's regulated and start to address that. Right after we drafted those, COVID came in 2020. It sat on a metaphorical shelf. It wasn't really addressed for quite, quite some time. Since then, when the phase one, uh, phase one of the LDC updates were being proposed, some COG members, the Santa Fe Housing Action Coalition, myself and some policymakers came together and we wanted to start to revive that. So we looked back at the 2019 stuff that I wrote back then and we tried to draft and adapt that so it could fit into this phase one. We, uh, we developed, uh, so, so myself and some different affordable housing groups, we developed some proposals and we gave that to the city. The city has now incorporated some of those. Let me also say that we have cut down a lot of the incentives that were originally proposed, trying to make it light, trying to make it simple, trying to really make sure it's only applicable to very limited situations. We've removed things like preferential review. We've removed some of the other financial incentives that could be applied. And we've copied some of the incentives that the city already gives. So the city is already giving different kinds of administrative review and financial review for things like, what's the?
Yeah, qualifying projects.
And the link.
And the link overlay, I was thinking St. Mike's and it has, doesn't use that title at all. So in the link overlay, there's already some of those incentives. So we're applying some of those. So we think about this as kind of a pilot project for phase two. One thing that we've, we've started to add into this is trying to make it a little bit more scalable. I'll get more into some of those incentives. And second, we provided some financial incentives, some, some minor financial incentives for all projects. For all projects, you have minor financial incentives. So instead of just waiving fees for a unit, you're waiving fees for the percentage of the development costs, which is quite significant. So when, um, when Siler Yards went through, it's a 100% affordable project. Didn't get 100% waiver because they have a lot of community aspects of that, that development. So we'd be changing that so that you would actually have the proportion of the project that's affordable, that development, the whole development would get those waivers, expanding those waivers a little bit to, to more like link overlays, also providing the options. So the state allows a lot more optional financial incentives. So just making it clear that the city could provide those if it wanted to. And then taking away the 15% density bonus so that you only get the 15% density bonus if you're actually providing SFHP units. That's all that we have drafted for the majority of projects that you see coming through. Any questions on just some of that real quick? And then I'll hop into the deeper incentives. Okay. So the deeper incentives. Let me also first explain this, this graphic real quick. So the brown over here is the market price. The green is the affordable, the orange is the, the density bonus. So what happens right now is, you know, if you're providing those affordable housing units or if you're not, you'd still get that density bonus, right? So our proposed incentives are, like I said, quite limited. And so how, how we're proposing this is that it's only for, only limited to two times the maximum, the minimum SFHP bonuses, uh, the SFHP requirements. So, um, so for sale, instead of the 20% that we require, it would be 40%. Or rent, instead of the 15%, it would be 30%. Now, in Santa Fe, we are not seeing a lot of those projects. Very expensive to actually provide those. So we see this as a very, very limited context that we'd be providing these things, not trying to rock the boat. Again, this is phase one, just setting things up so that we could start to evaluate how these are working. Usually, um, these kinds of developments need a lot of subsidies. So you either have really awesome developers that are committed to the community benefits or you've got homeowners that don't really care about typical market concerns and are trying to do some of this. So we're just trying to incentivize some of that, make it a little bit easier for people who are already trying to provide affordable housing, just make it easier for them. The density bonus is probably one of the most significant things that we're, we're proposing for these deeply affordable housing. And it's how this works is if you're providing the 30 to 39% affordable. So again, that would only be for rental, providing twice as much. Right now, we, we rarely even see the 15% affordable for rent. So if you're providing twice, twice that, you'd get a one and a half density bonus units for every Santa Fe Homes program, every affordable unit that you provide. If you're starting to scale up to the 40 to 49%, again, that would start to look at the for-sale units. Something we don't see that often. It's usually the nonprofit developers and things like that. That would be a 1.75 density bonus for every affordable unit. And then if you're going above 50%, that would be two density bonus units for every affordable unit. Scenario we have over on the side is if you were required to typically put in 20 dwelling units. Again, we kind of have these, these 20 units over here. If you were doing the 30% affordability, that would be six affordable, affordable priced homes. So you would get nine density bonus units. So to be able to increase that, so a total of 29 units. Any questions on that stuff?
So I want to make sure that I completely understand this, Carlos, inside and out. And I think that means maybe comparing it. And I think that means maybe comparing it also to your last slide. And see if we can compare the two. So this is a rental unit scenario.
Correct. This would only work for a rental unit scenario that's required 15, is doing 30.
And your last slide, can you go back one?
So the last slide would be this.
That would also be potentially a standard rental scenario.
Correct.
Which would result in 16 market price for affordable, a total of 23 on a piece of property.
Correct.
And the next one, can you go back again? So that would be
Twenty-nine.
Six affordable and 29 on the same property.
Right.
And I was at last night's presentation, and you did say if it could meet all of the other requirements
Correct.
Of the property we're talking about in this scenario.
Right. And so this is not saying that you are getting around the requirements for water and sewer. This is not saying that you're getting around requirements for traffic. It's not saying that you're getting around massing requirements. It's not giving extra height bonuses. There's some, some small parking, some small developments and design incentives that we'd be giving, but it's relatively minor. So you'd still have to fit those. What it tends to mean is that you'd have to provide smaller units in order to make that work on the parcel. Right now, I mean, the regulations right now tend to incentivize larger units, less larger, more expensive units. This starts to reverse that a tiny bit.
And it would result in, you know, more market units, but it would also make those affordable units potentially, the theory is that it would make those affordable units more doable.
Exactly. And so, so Santa Fe, you know, whether you're looking at the city, the city's affordable housing plan that was just released this last summer, whether you're looking at the county plan, whether you're looking at a lot of different plans within New Mexico, there's a shortage problem, right? So Santa Fe has a huge shortage problem, needs more units of any type of price point that it could get. It specifically needs more affordable housing units, but it also needs more market rate, et cetera. And so the idea with this is, in these very limited circumstances, you'd be allowed to have a little bit more dwelling units in total, but you'd also have to provide more affordable housing.
Thank you.
Carlos, I just want to add something, and this is just something that's come to my mind as we're doing these, all these, you know, proposed changes to the code, is how the kind of adding the different housing types, you know, to our code, duplexes, triplexes, fourplexes, this kind of idea of like compound development, how, you know, this proposal and those new, you know, permissive housing types might come together, you know, in Santa Fe, and be, you know, be possible.
I think when you think about making Phase Two changes more towards a form-based code, it would kind of connect the dots there, wouldn't it? Particularly if there were, well, yeah.
Yeah. And an example, kind of getting back into density and how many units are we allowing within the site? A different way of regulating this, I mean hypothetically, you could say that you're allowed to build 5,000 square feet on a property, 5,000, you know, residential square feet, and you could put any amount of units that you want in there, provided that it works with all the other regulations. We don't do that. We say you could put one, right? We, you could put one, or you could put two, or three, or whatever. So because we're regulating just by that density of number of units, the applicants and developers are incentivized to have less units and have those be much bigger. And so again, that's where you're allowing more of those units, but you still have to fit them within the same kind of footprint, within the same kind of massing. Hypothetically, you can make this a lot more efficient, you can make them a lot more naturally.
Would there be any changes? I guess it's kind of directed towards you and staff and like the open space concept you were mentioning on parking.
Correct. Yeah. So, so what we have in here right now, and if you look at it, I could pull up the wordage right now. But in here, we have some design flexibility. So for lot area, instead of looking at kind of a prescribed lot area, it would just be the lot area required for the density. And so in this instance, you know, you have 29 homes, the lots would just have to be able to fit the 29 homes. For lot coverage and open space, you'd have less of the lot coverage requirements, but you'd still have to provide the private open space that we're requiring for things like multifamily. It just allows a little bit more flexibility on how you could develop that lot. Setbacks and step backs would be waived for interior lot lines. And so exterior to the project, for your neighbors and things like that, you would still have setbacks and step backs and things like that. But interior to the project, and so especially for subdivisions, compact, compound style developments, you'd be able to waive those and have those be a little bit more compact, again, just to the interior of the development.
Can you remind me what were the height restrictions that we were gonna?
This does not change the city's height restrictions at all, which could be significant. The city's proposed increasing two feet for residential and commercial. Correct?
Now, the first time I saw this, it did have a height bonus. And this isn't so much a question, well, it's not a question, but I really think this program should have that. I feel like I really question how often this is going to be able to happen.
I think that's a great point, Commissioner. There was a lot of stuff that we were trying to get into this, that we wanted to investigate. Again, a lot of that stuff was pulled out just to make it where, how can we make this, you know, as, as, as least substantive as possible, but still making some changes rather than waiting multiple years? I think there's options to still add things and subtract things, of course, but, but right now, we do not have height incentives. We're not allowing additional height. We're not allowing that much more massing. We're not, again, we're trying to make it fit within the existing code and only for these very specific projects that you don't typically see already.
And with these developments, majority of the developers and builders here in Santa Fe are, you know, there's a few that can handle this kind of production rate. So are those going to be on a scaled-down version as well?
The hope is that we, the scale, the scales regardless of what's required, right? And so this, this, you know, this example is the 20 base dwelling units of density. It scales, you know, if you're required 100, just multiply all these numbers by five, right? If you're required to do five, divide it by four and thing. And so it's still, yeah. And let me also, let me also go, I do want to talk about the small infill projects too. Okay, okay. Yeah, let me get to this. So we're also proposing small infill projects, limited only to R1 densities. Right now, the code says for properties one acre or smaller, I just emailed you all today about this. I don't think that actually works very well, but either way, the idea is for very limited, smaller-sized projects that are zoned R1. Basically, you know, if you're, if you're looking at R1, it's practically impossible to get affordable housing within R1, R5, R7. It's hard to get affordable housing at these lower densities unless, again, you're a unicorn developer or you're a mom and pop that doesn't care about the market, that doesn't care about market returns, it's just trying to get your kids in a place, it's just trying to get grandma in a place. So, so pretty limited in how we're looking at some of this right now. But it would be that if, if on those smaller lots, that you might only be able to build one unit, you build that one unit as affordable, which is kind of an 100% affordability based on the base rate, you'd be able to have an extra density bonus of three units. And so, again, so if you're in a small lot, small development, you're building one affordable unit on there, you'd have three extra units you'd be able to provide to offset some of those costs.
You have this labeled as a small infill. There's also going to be covenants, codes, and restrictions of the neighborhood that could limit this as well.
Absolutely, absolutely. And so again, this is not getting around different kinds of density controls. It's not getting around private covenants. It's not getting around utility regulations. It's not getting around other things like that. There would still be building requirements. There would still be all the technical requirements, kind of like ADUs. I mean, this is getting rid of some barriers, but it's, it's, it's still quite a, quite a challenge to actually build these and see these in the market.
When you mentioned that you weren't so sure it worked, you're talking about it just being inside R1, right?
What I, what I'm talking about is that in R1, hypothetically, the minimum lot size you could have in R1 is one unit. Sorry, is one acre. And so if you're saying it has to be one acre or smaller, then you're only going to, you're only going to get lots that are illegally sized, right? Grandfathered in, they were already smaller, we zoned them R1, a lot of the, a lot of the city is R1. So either lots that are kind of legacy lots that are non-conforming to the existing lot size or the absolute minimum that fits inside of an R1. And so it probably makes sense to bump up that size a little bit. Fill a conversation. And then let me also just point out that for these deeply affordable things, the administrative review, and so right now, again, in LINK, administrative review is available for all development plans. So it'd also be saying that for these, you know, deeply affordable kinds of projects, you'd also have administratively reviewed. Any other question?
I think you'll have some downtown owners wanting to add some ADUs and a few other structures onto some of their properties.
The height requirement changing isn't, wouldn't as much be a question to you, but that's not at all something that is going to be contemplated in Phase One?
Chair Lawrence and Commissioner Miranda, I mean, I think as a planning commissioner, if you wanted to propose something like that, we would certainly, you know, consider that and, or you could amend the, you know, recommend that to the governing body as well. Imagine, yeah, to add that to this. If you have a specific, you know, thing you want to follow up with, we can, you know, look at it and review it and see, you know, how that might fit into this and include that as we go forward.
And I'll just add some context because I think there was a lot of discussion about that, and you were there for a lot of that, Commissioner Miranda. And we, there was a lot of concern that adding a height bonus would politicize this too much. And we were already feeling like this was pushing the envelope for Phase One, and we were happy to bring it forward. But that's why the COG and certain members of the Planning Commission Subcommittee and others advised us that that height in particular might be pushing this particular proposal too far in Phase One to where it might get politicized. That being said, I think we're open to suggestions. And if you think this doesn't go far enough, and we have the political will to go that direction, then that may be the case.
Definitely. Back and forth on height, it was clear from the get-go that that was going to be the most contentious part of all of it. Administrative review to a certain degree too, because you're not having any hands on these projects. And we're not coming to as many meetings, so that's awful.
It's interesting. I mean, it could be, it could be something that, I mean, I think our goal here and what we heard and what we hear in the community so much is that affordability is a, you know, ever-present issue. And something needed to be done now in Phase One and not pushed to Phase Two. And so, you know, and we agree, you know, with that as well, and that's something. And so that's what, that's what this is. I do think, you know, it is best characterized as a pilot project. My goal was that it was something that people opt into only, not a new requirement that we're adding to the code. And so I think it meets that standard as well. So if somebody wants to do this and try this on their property, they can do that. They can come to us with a proposal and we can, you know, make sure that it meets the standards. And so I think, you know, those are other components of what went into the thinking behind it. I think in Phase Two, if we want to look at some design standards, you know, more form-based design standards for what types of, you know, development we could do and, you know, maybe address some, some height and step backs and how that might look, that could help, you know, move these projects forward in future iterations of the code update. That may also be something to think about with this one. But we do think, you know, we heard a lot of positive reactions from the community on Tuesday night at the Southside Library as well as last night, just that we need more affordable housing, we need more options, and we need it, you know, sooner rather than later. I don't think this is going to solve all of those problems as well. No one thing will. But it's important that we're, we're trying, you know, to solve it in multiple fronts. And so, yeah, I think we're moving forward. Thank you.
Yeah, I'll say, I like this as a stepping stone to Phase Two. It is very simple. It's not making huge changes. But I am hopeful that we'll see some good examples, some signs that, you know, this, this is not something to worry about. And then let's look for maybe being another step forward by the time we get to Phase Two or Phase.
Yeah, I think it'll be, I'm sorry, Carlos, I think it'll be interesting to see, you know, we tend to touch upon this a little bit on the other nights and about, you know, what is the code and the market incentivizing right now in Santa Fe? And it is, you know, big houses, expensive houses. And so, you know, in a situation like this, you know, you could put, you know, I mean, we see 10,000 square foot homes. We see, you know, single-family homes, if you will. 13,000 square foot homes come in for building permits. And so you could imagine a situation where a developer, instead of building, you know, that, may choose to do, you know, a fourplex or, you know, some modest, you know, development of like the residential compound style, where you could get four units in probably a less footprint than some single-family homes that we're seeing out in the market. But it's just, it could diversify things, you know, potentially. And so I think, you know, that's also one, you know, potential outcome.
So, well, while we were talking, I was just looking at this diagram of the small properties. And I wanted to make sure, and this may be covered by our affordable housing regulations, but that we would not allow the option of someone building a unit that they said would be affordable, but then never leasing it out. Or, you know, just letting it sit there, making it sort of an unofficial or illegal guest house or casita. I want to make sure that we have that enforcement mechanism in place as well.
Yeah, yeah, Chair Lawrence, we would, we would make them follow the same, you know, procedures for the Affordable Homes program as far as, you know, getting a proposal, which is generally how we, how, you know, developments start out, establishing, you know, what level of affordability they want to do. And then before we, you know, allow them to move into construction, they get the actual certified agreement, you know, that clarifies, you know, how much affordable, which units are affordable. And then there's those restrictions contained therein. I also want to clarify too, you know, unlike the, you know, kind of standard existing Santa Fe Homes program, there will be no fee and lieu, you know, for these. You're either going to provide the housing, you know, at the percentages, the, you know, expanded percentages or not. But there's not a way to pay and get the density bonuses, you know, associated with this program. We think that's also another important factor.
And we also want to note, you know, totally separate from the Chapter 14 process is Chapter 26. Chapter 26 is what actually regulates how the Santa Fe Homes program works. A lot of paperwork goes into that, a lot of signatures, a lot of financial guarantees. It, I, I mean, I do think it would be in the city's interest if you do want these to work for smaller projects. It also means potentially scaling how the Santa Fe Homes program works. Right now, it tends to work only for single-family homes in larger subdivisions. And so changing that to work for the small mom and pop that wants to provide some extra units, that might, that might require changing how those processes work. Again, that's totally separate from the Chapter 14 process. That could also happen at any point in time. Of course, there's staff constraints and time constraints, et cetera, et cetera. But that's, yeah, that's a separate process and certainly a huge opportunity for the city to explore.
And I'll just share another gold mine for this, was that it was very discreet, you know, and didn't reach out into other areas of Chapter 14 too much, or other areas of the, you know, of the code, the city code, and was just really like a true kind of pilot incentive project that just kind of offered these, you know, carrots to see, you know, who might take that, you know, incentive.
Fee and lieu has not been removed from the multifamily?
Yeah, correct. We haven't touched the existing program in any way. That is, you know, staying as is. So you still, you know, we're still requiring, you know, for-sale developers to provide 20% affordability. And then for rental, you know, that's And then for rental, you know, that's where they are in multifamily projects that we see. Those are the ones that, you know, often, you know, times take the, the fee and lieu option versus providing the affordability. So it'll be interesting to see if we get any, you know, any takers in the multifamily rental market on this, you know, this incentive program to see if that, you know, makes it pencil out a little bit more at the higher density bonuses.
Commissioner, there's one other point I'll, I'll note that's, that's also somewhat separate from, from the chapter 14 updates. In 2019, when the city updated the fee and lieu, tried to raise that, have that, that work. I believe that was a five year kind of phased in update process and then reevaluating. It's been about five years. And so it's, so that's another thing that the city has a huge opportunity to explore. Potentially raising fee and lieu, again, probably outside of the chapter 14 LDC updates, but, but something that the city could absolutely get into.
Thank you, Carlos.
Thank you very much.
Last part of the presentation of phases two and three, future changes. You know, it's, it's been, it's worth remembering just phase two is the, is the big block of substantive change that happens after phase one. Phase three is substantive change after the general plan update. Beyond that though, there's more conversation probably to be had about what phase two looks like. And is that one big block of change or is it broken into multiple increments? We haven't really had a lot of conversations yet with staff about what that looks like. But if there's a lot of momentum behind a particular topic or a particular batch of edits, there's not to say that couldn't move forward on a more aggressive timetable and not have to wait two years. I talked with several people last night and they were just, they felt like putting something into the phase two basket meant it wasn't going to happen until 2027. Because things slow down, you know, and I, I just think we need to go into this recognizing that we have momentum, that a lot of these ideas have already been identified. They've already established some clear support and maybe it's changes to the home program, but they could happen on a more aggressive schedule. So phase two, to be determined what that really looks like in terms of schedule. It's important to record. With that said, some of the things that we've identified in the report, many of these are noted in the footnotes. And just to remind you, there's, there's a lot of breadcrumbs in the, in the phase one document in the footnotes about things to, to look at for phase two and three, where we think this could go. Those are not comprehensive. They're not exhaustive, but there's a lot of good ideas there. In terms of zone districts, looking at the table and going beyond the, the level of change that Jenny talked about, be really thoughtful about all of these districts. And do you have multiple districts that are trying to accomplish the same thing and have very similar standards, have similar use lists? Could those be combined? Are there districts you're not using at all? Could those potentially be retired? Do you need new districts altogether? We've put some of those items here on this list. Now, for example, you've got these special purpose districts, many of which were adopted for particular use types like hospital or shopping center, and you've got other better tools for dealing with those in the code that they don't need their own districts. Now, this next bullet, compare the BCD, Business Capital District and Historic Boundaries to clarify standards that prevail when they overlap. This is a, this is not just a zone district issue. This is an overlay and a base district issue. BCD is the base zoning historic, you know, is going to potentially come into that often with additional standards. The concern that came up a lot during the drafting process was that BCD is just really complex. And you've got these multiple, I think there's 18 townscapes that have been identified. They have each have their own design objectives, vaguely written. And they've got a little bit of teeth in terms of some setbacks or some FARs, but they're pretty modest. There's not much meat there really. And everyone we talked to said, well, we just ignored the BCD because we know that historic is going to trump that. And so you get to this situation where you have a very complex part of your code, takes a lot of pages to get through BCD. And if people are just ignoring that anyway, to get to the historic standards, that just calls for a reevaluation of whether or not both of those tools are necessary. So it's, it's, it's a good place where some time needs to be spent. I know the historic subcommittee has already started to think about that. We didn't want to touch on that too much in the phase one piece, obviously, because that's, that's a place where we need to step back and reevaluate the fundamental purposes of both of those. Maybe that's a general plan piece, I'm not sure, but I know that they've already started to work it. Mixed use districts, we've, we've talked about how those could be made easier by.
My understanding is that the difference between BCD and historic is BCD is this use of the structure, whereas historic is going to guarantee the aesthetics of the structure.
It's, it, I've seen some language about that, but there's also a lot of aesthetic oriented design objectives in the BCD. So you look at BCD as a newcomer, you know, we didn't write that stuff and it's, it's, it's a little hard to tell, you know, what the intent is. And, and those 18 sub-districts really vary in their level of detail.
I mean, well, we talked about this before, but I mean, the way I look at BCD is it's the base zoning for for those properties, you know, but, but there's almost, well, no, it's the base zoning for the property that's in the district. The thing is, there's very little within that that becomes relevant, historic. So, yeah, I think it's very.
You know, and one of the other conversations that potentially will be had is can downtown east side, did that stay one large district or could that be two separate districts recognizing two different sets of line objectives? And if that's the case, well, then that really calls for a reevaluation of BCD as well. And I'm not saying that's the direction you should go in. That's a big change, but this is the time to think about big changes when you're doing a general plan update. Speaking of the general plan update, after that's done, definitely, there, there will be as part of that effort, a new future land use map that needs to be compared to the zoning map. You know, people always wonder as part of code updates, are you going to rezone my property? You know, is this going to involve a comprehensive rezone of the city? You know, that answer is different in different projects that we work in. Sometimes the level of rezoning is pretty tailored, it's pretty targeted to certain areas. Maybe you've got new zone mixed use districts and you want to do some targeted rezonings to that. Other times it's more citywide and it's really too early to say the level of change that will be coming out of that general plan process and how that might relate to your zone district. So it's, this is a, this is a real to be determined.
It's exciting. I mean, we've heard a lot of people start talking about Cerro Serrano and how that should look or be changed. And so that, you know, corridor could all become a new district or a new corridor, you know, and with standards and, you know, for development and density and design and everything. So that acts and so that's kind of, you know, one example of just what people are starting to talk about. Right now it's all red, it's C2, you know, we know what is allowed there. So, you know, those are, those are the types of potential changes that we could, we could do in, you know, in phase three.
Oh, particularly in more like satellite residential developments, it does seem like we're lacking a zoning that might be a little more specific in terms of we've had cases recently that have this in it in terms of bringing into a more remote community what people would want. Right now, the mechanisms for that are fairly blunt, right? There any discussion about making something basically in between C2 and C4?
Yeah, you know, neighborhood serving commercial uses, you know, where can I walk down to the store to get some milk? Not have to get in my car and drive to the shopping center. I can't remember the name of the neighborhood around the Southside Library. We drove through there.
Chair Contenta.
Yes. And that was, that was a great example of where people are really calling for small scale mixed regions, mixed use. You don't really have tools for that right now. And that's when I talk about on the prior slide, new districts tailored by scale and intensity, that's kind of getting at that point. There's a need for small scale mixed use. That's the small corner shop going into a neighborhood that's surrounded by merely residential. But you might have mixed use at a much larger scale where maybe you've got some outdated shopping centers on Cerros that could turn into a node, high density residential that are anchored by some that exist in retail, but new retail as well. So there's, there's oftentimes in a, in a general plan update, communities these days will have the bubble map, you know, with activity centers, mixed use centers or whatever they call it. And you're not just going to have the downtown in Santa Fe, you're going to have multiple centers of different scales. And you don't really have the tools right now in your, in your zoning toolbox to implement. So it really does need to be readied throughout the spectrum. But yeah, we heard a lot of people call for that. Especially outside the downtown, Santa Fe is not that. Overlays. Beyond what Jenny talked about. And, and, and I did want to say, one of the things that we did add in the escarpment overlay was we went back, staff identified an old escarpment development handbook that has some great illustrations in it. And so some of the new illustrations that are in there were recreated from work at the single time ago. But can we simplify that overall system? Overlays were created to resolve perceived problems at a certain point in time. If the people felt like that zoning was not sufficient on its own, we have to add this additional layer of regulations. But oftentimes with a code update, you can go back and say, do we really need all of those additional supplemental Band-Aids? And we maybe just incorporate some of those tools into the underlying standards applied citywide. So that exercise needs to apply for all the different overlays that you have. Some of them might be pretty easy answers, you know, if you've got an arts and craft, you need an arts and craft overlay when you've got an arts and craft base district. Are those really accomplishing separate purposes? You need that separate Band-Aid on top of the base. If you get into more sector planning work for the general plan, where you're going through different neighborhoods in the community and establishing a tool for area specific zoning, you still need this neighborhood conservation overlay tool that you have. Maybe you do, but, but maybe not. So that's just the, the level of exercise and analysis you'll have to do with all of those districts that we'll do together with all of those tools. Beyond just reducing the number of overlays, update the existing ones to revise standards. We've talked about Cerro Serrano. We've talked about other corridors and the line with desire development. And the term form based keeps getting used. But that means different things to different people and we'll need to start being a little bit more precise with our language. And the idea I think is just to clarify, really the types of physical spaces that we're, that we want to see. And the relationship of private development, public roadways and other public spaces. And what do we want to do in our zoning to institute that or require that beyond what we've got in front of standards? That's, those roadways are very long and that's, that's a good example of where you're probably going to want to have node based standards versus linkage standards. So there's, there's going to be a lot of fine tuning there. Further changes to historic and archaeological. That's a very specialized part of your code, very important to the character of the city. That's why I think there's a special working group has already started on that piece. There's, they've been untouched for so long because so many people have been hesitant to really tinker with those standards that they've, they've just electrified. And, and there's, there's some problems there that I think can hopefully be resolved now that trust has been built up with these working groups and people are really seeing some opportunities. Electrified is. Use table. Jenny talked about this. We can take it to the next level. One of the big things that needs to be done is, is to think about new uses, maybe beyond the yellow ones that were added here in terms of housing types. Might be additional uses to think through. There's more consolidation that can perhaps be done in the, in the retail uses in this current table. We kept some of your separate retail uses like flower shop and the bookshop and art supply store. The functionally, the, the land use impacts of those are going to be pretty similar. And so those typically in a code that we do would be collapsed into retail. We might have a retail small, retail medium, retail large. Those are the types of conversations that we have to simplify that table. All the different cells in the table need to be rethought through. And we, we took a very light touch on this, but now as we're rethinking the purposes of the districts and maybe combining some and adding new ones, we can really do a deeper dive on that table about where things rely. Development design, deeper dive, that applies to all these things. So y'all have developed the architectural design checklist as a way to evaluate design issues, building design outside the historic. Maybe it's a good approach. Maybe it's a good approach that just needs to be fine tuned. We heard a lot of comments that maybe the points are not well calibrated. It just needs to be rethought through. You've got the right things identified. They're just not scoring accurately to reflect the level of intent, the level of effort required. Or maybe you just need to have a different system altogether where you clarify what the standards are and you don't go through a performance based system like, like we have now. I think there's just needs to be more conversations with the community about showing them what a, what a different approach might look like with standards versus this checklist. Really get more feedback on what, what people like. There's some good stuff in that checklist. But if, if people really feel like it's not resulting in good quality work, we can, we can be more aggressive. Let me just pause right there. For everything we're talking about here, phase two is intended to start with another mini assessment report where we take a lot of these ideas and we put them in writing. So it's not just us saying this now, we're not just going to jump into the drafting. We're going to put out another assessment report that really now starts to take this to the next level. So on our architectural design review, that's where we would lay out that idea of using standards. On landscaping, we would lay out this idea of better emphasis on native plants, water conservation, et cetera. They'll have some things right now like on turf limitation. We carried that forward, but we have a note in there that says, well, maybe we need to be even more aggressive about prohibiting a turf in new development. A bigger conversation on parking, many communities that we work in are getting rid of parking requirements altogether. Or some of them are just saying in the downtown or places where we have the infrastructure and we don't need to have more cars or the city is providing parking structures. We need to have more of those conversations here. Some people have said, yes, that's important. Other people have said, no, the tourism that we get is dependent on adequate parking. I'm going to go through all these here. There's, there, innocent prairie dogs might be an old problem. It's not necessary to carry forward those regulations to protect that species anymore. Procedures, how can we be as efficient as possible? And I will say that this is a, it's a central part of all the codes we work on. So I, it's an interesting perspective to say, this is, this is maybe not part of the zoning code, but from, I guess, just the way I think about it. How do you apply all those other standards and all the other parts of the code? And how do you work to evaluate the competing interests in the use table? Zoning districts. This is the part of the code that provides a way for us to evaluate if things comply with those standards. I think a big question here is, are the decisions being made at the appropriate level? Can more things be taken down to the staff level? So that small stuff can get through fast, you all can spend more of your time on the bigger projects that have more community wide impacts and the governing bodies. BNN process, early neighborhood notification. A lot of communities have tools like this. Some people say they are tools for the neighborhoods to shoot down anything in their backyard. Others say they're crucial for neighborhoods to understand the impacts of projects that are coming in and protect their character. So I think there's just more conversation to be had about, is it working the way you want it to? And can it be fine tuned in a way that better meets both sides of that org? Can we expedite certain procedures that are really meeting city goals? You've already done some expediting for affordable housing, like we talked about. Other communities would expedite for other community goals, more open space or more drawing a blank on other goals, more, more aesthetic improvements, more public art. But anything that needs an identified city goal, you know, can you get it through the system? That's my last slide. That's a whirlwind tour of everything to be looked at in phase two and three. Again, an important point is that we will guide you through that with an assessment report, where we'll, where we'll start to carry those forward. And I think an important conversation with Daniel and Maggie and Heather and their team is just what that, what that phase two looks like mechanically. And do we have different tracks for different things? Obviously, staff resources and time are crucial for any process. And anytime you move something separate on its own separate track, that detracts attention from everything else. Things just take on the life of their own. So you don't want to, you don't want to break out every one of these things into its own set of amendments. It's just not feasible. But if there's any super hybrid, that's, that's a conversation.
Yeah. Matt, can you just say a few quick words about the disposition report? I think that'll help their review process.
Yes. Thank you, Daniel. There is going to be a table that we put online that's going to be a column, a column based thing where column A is. column A is going to be your existing code organization and column B is going to be the new location of that material. So you'll, you'll be able to do a quick uh line of, of, of any section that you're looking for to figure out where it landed in the new code or if it was replaced. Um, we don't have the whole thing finished just yet. It's, it's over halfway finished, but um it'll, it'll be up very soon. That'll be on the, on the website.
I have to say that you make phases two and three sound pretty daunting right now, but you did make phase one look very easy. So I'm hopeful. Um, I had a question that I think was mostly for staff at this point, but you might be able to assist as well. Um, and that is what we are going to see and when, before we meet again to discuss a recommendation on these changes. I know that there are still some things that we have a draft, there are still some things in progress. I want to get a sense of what else we will see and when before we meet again on this.
I think, thanks, Matt. Yeah, you read my mind. Um, maybe you could zoom in a little bit on the October and beyond section. Can you, is that possible? I don't know if it's possible in PowerPoint. Um, I'm not sure if you can quite read that, but I'll at least give you the, um, the general gist of it. So, oh, oh, there it goes. Yeah, there's the connection's a little wonky. Okay, yeah, so, um, do I? Um, so, so we have still have some, some missing pieces here and there. Uh, as, as mentioned, the uh H R B subcommittee is putting some finishing touches on their um changes. Um, however, I, as far as I know, those are non substantive changes. They're just working on getting their section more tidy like we have for the rest of the code. Um, they just are a little behind. Um, so that, that will be part of the adoption draft as we're calling it. And that's what we'll be releasing uh on October fifteenth. Um, and that is the draft that theoretically will go all the way forward to, to adoption at the governing body. Um, and December would be the earliest time that that could happen. Uh, between now, between um, the adoption draft.
Just interrupt on you, you said October fifteenth, but we're meeting to recommend on October seventeenth. Um, is there any way that we can plan that schedule a day or two earlier, the weekend before, anything like that? So that
Yeah.
we can have that happen.
Yeah, so, so what the timeline is right now, we've got the, you know, the, the public draft is going to be up for two weeks. We are going to take it down um at the end of the month and make additional changes to it over those two weeks. And then, you know, which will be uh public comments that we're getting over the next two weeks um while it's up. And then the historic changes that we're, we're still waiting on and should be forthcoming um next week. And so those will be incorporated into that draft. Um, and then, you know, to keep this timeline going the way that it is, um, you know, that is our October seventeenth is our second meeting, you know, in October. And so that's, um, that's going to be the thing. I think, um,
Well, so I, I understand that timeline, but then I would, and I understand the time pressure. Then I would ask staff to be really, really, really clear about all those things that change.
Yeah.
We, we will go to the historic board as well to get their, you know, kind of review and recommendation on their piece of the code. So you don't have to worry about looking at that. Um, but um, yeah, I mean, I, I would just invite you to look at it now. I mean, it's six hundred and thirty seven pages, so you know.
I know, I've read it.
So the disposition report is going to help a lot.
Disposition report is going to help, yeah.
Yeah, because
One person talking at time, so, um, so, yeah, I think uh you, you should look at it now. Look at it now, see what it is, you know? And, and we will be clear about, you know, what is changed on October fifteenth, but we are asking for your recommendation on October seventeenth. And then we have to go forward to the governing body uh introduction on the thirtieth and then go through the governing body um uh committees uh further, you know, on uh into November in order to hopefully, you know, go to adoption by the end of the year. Um, so, so we're going to, we're going to stick to this for now and um hope that we can, you know, answer any questions that you guys have. I have met um also with our city counselors uh in some, you know, work sessions, some individually and some in very, you know, non quorum groups of those to start to, you know, bring them um understanding of what we've done. And, you know, we will continue to, you know, meet with them and work with them so that they're comfortable and that all your questions are answered and addressed. Um, so please, you know, feel free to reach out anytime between, you know, just anytime as always. And I, I think, you know, I hope that you will be comfortable voting to recommend approval on the seventeenth.
I will just ask that staff is very, very thorough on any changes.
Yes, as, as mentioned, the disposition report is, is pretty legible. I, I, I don't know if you've seen the draft yet, we're working on the final draft now, but it has before, after and me, and the reason. And I think where you also want to highlight, like highlight the substantive changes within those so that those are especially called out. I think that'll be really helpful because it is a tome and you're familiar with it, but we, we want to call out the major changes.
Yeah. Guys have any ETA on that ready?
Jenny, do you have an ETA on when that?
I think it was soon, yeah. I think that was the time, um, no, I think it was like
Be a little more precise than soon, um, not next week, but the following.
Thank you.
And again, I would just say, you know, it's up now. You know, you have about a month before you're supposed to recommend adoption. So please, you know, take a look. Um, you see, I think the footnotes and, and the other notations are quite helpful. You know, one of the questions we got early on was like, are we going to see red lines? And I think you, you know, based on what we've shown you, what we've done and the reorganization that's happening that that, that ship has sailed a long time ago. But um, you know, it is quite navigable and um, and there are those highlights at the beginning of every section that just summarizes like, here's what we did here. Uh, and so you can, you can kind of follow along in that way.
We, we can do red lines from this draft to the adoption draft. So you will be able to see changes from this, this foundations draft.
That, that would be helpful, I think, since we have a short time period, that would be useful. Thank you. Any, any other commissioners have any other questions, comments, thoughts?
Just, just one, because it didn't come up when I was reviewing it. But when you were going through procedures, has there been any contemplation on a, I don't know if it can be done, but any kind of procedure that would help the problems that have been happening with a lot of record? Um, I mean, we just have a lot of cumbersome lots in here. Just, I know how much time within staff's limited capacity those lots take up.
Um, what's the issue with them? Is, is it?
Maybe I should answer that one, yeah, sorry. Um, so with legal out of record, we haven't, you know, changed the, what the city, you know, um deems legal out of record or touched that or, you know, what we require, you know, what we require for it, which we require it for building permits and development review and, and everything alike. So that hasn't been touched. Um, I think it, it could be touched maybe in phase two or three. Um, and maybe certainly could be addressed in the general plan update as well. Um, you know, it is, it is a unique, you know, mostly a ne- unique issue for the historic, you know, downtown uh area where we have had hundreds of years of development and then, you know, and then a code that we adopted in the sixties. And it didn't, that adoption didn't reach everyone right away. There are people were doing, um, you know, kind of dividing and, and transferring their land, you know, for years without necessarily getting uh the approval of the city as they were supposed to. So, yeah, it's definitely a conversation I would like to have uh because it does um cause a lot of problems and it's very painful for property owners, um, for staff because we don't always have clear solutions uh or, you know, off ramps for folks. And so I think, um, yeah, we need to have that conversation.
That's why I said, what is the issue? Because it, it's, it's, it's really a question of, it could be multiple things. It could be, are we looking for a process by which someone can ver- verify, you know, their status as a legal lot of record? It could be that we're just trying to clarify the relaxation of certain standards that apply to legal lots of record when you're trying to do certain things. So they exist in a lot of places, we just need to figure out if, if they are problematic. What's the problem? What are we trying to solve?
And I'll just add, another opportunity we have is actually like maybe relegal, legalizing certain parcels that have become illegal due to density in particular. Um, so that's another approach is kind of coming in from the other side of just then uh adding density where it already exists. Legalizing density.
That's more what I was thinking, less change the requirement. I, I, I suppose I phrased it the wrong way, but I, I, I would think you wouldn't want to change what legal lot of record means and where you require it, but provide mechanisms that are really at have some kind of built in discretion of how they're used instead of these properties being these like albatrosses that um, you have to spend so much time for backing forth on, well.
Yeah, we need, we need to have clear, you know, processes around there and clear uh approval criteria. You know, that, that staff and or the planning commission could make to make lots legal that we know are technically not. Yeah, so. Thank you.
Any other questions, any other comments? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, that brings us to any staff communications.
Wow, I feel like I've communicated a lot tonight.
And we appreciate it.
No, um, I do, you know, I just want to reiterate like it's up online. I know some of you have spent some, quite some time with the document already. And I'm glad to hear that we can provide you with some red lines, you know, so that you can, you know, kind of quickly see like, okay, what did I look at on September and what am I seeing, you know, here today? And, you know, my goal is to really address all your concerns, you know, address all your questions. Um, likewise with the governing body members so that, you know, it is a, um, you feel comfortable, you know, recommending approval here. Um, I think we will have, uh, you know, when we do have the public hearing officially and, you know, receive public comment, we'll also have, you know, members of, you know, the cog and the talk who, you know, need to be here to answer, you know, specific questions, you know, for you again about areas of the update that we think, you know, need some more clarification potentially. So they will be present. Um, and yeah, I don't know. I think, um, I just want to plug to the, uh, we have the drop in hours next week that we're doing. So um, down at Market Del Sur on Tuesday on um, at the south side library again on Wednesday and then here at city hall. And that's just inviting, you know, members of the public to come in and sit down and kind of drill, drill into some of these issues if they have identified questions. And then there will be many opportunities, um, you know, in October and November to the public to attend public hearings, you know, on this uh effort.
Thank you. Any matters from the commission? We're adjourned, thanks all.